With everyone. Um, directly. Have their email and also on the episode dot com and also in the WhatsApp chat. Uh, but it's not going to be directly on YouTube for everyone to see. So if you would like to. Uh, come off me, you definitely can. You can, um, if you feel comfortable to be on camera, you definitely can as well. Uh, make sure, hope we got through more people in the lobby. All right, great. Let me, uh, prepare the instructions for us now, now that, um, we have that preface. And I'm going to share this link. In the chat. Make sure everyone can actually open it and want the link should be able to open it now. Okay, there are viewer. Copy. I do recommend, um, if you're able to. Download it so you can make a copy of it. I think that'll be probably the best thing for. For us all. Uh, just in case you want to actually write inside the document. All right, there it is. Okay, cool. Okay, so let me remove this here so I can ask, but it's fine. Okay, great, we're fine. All right. So just so I can set the, the tone and, and the preface for, for this, because we haven't gone over a lot of, um. Logic or reasoning, uh, but I mean, this is an opportunity for us to not only. Learn it, uh, well, learn a little bit more about it, but also participate in it. And my goal is for us to actually learn, um, together with the participation. So this is a workshop, um, based on, uh, logic and reasoning. And sorry if I stop this because I'm letting people in. There you go. Uh, one of our, uh, most powerful sessions so far, uh, for sharpening how you think, not just what you know. Uh, tonight you'll learn to analyze arguments, identify assumptions and evaluate conclusions. Uh, just like a real diplomat. Uh, faced with incomplete data in a tight deadline. So whether. You're here live or you're watching this replay, uh, remember the session is about developing disciplined thinking under pressure. Uh, this will be a timed session as well, um, each time we break out into the breakout rooms. Uh, lodging and reasoning are the backbone of effective diplomacy. Uh, they can. Help you stay calm, confident and credible, uh, in every conversation memo and negotiation. So. With Debbie said, if you're watching this. Replay, um, just. Set your space up, have a notebook if you can, or a Google Doc, or you can download this. I made sure to put in the description for you. Read each scenario. And this is for everyone. So you can get to know, you know, what to expect. Uh, read each scenario fully before answering the questions. Pause, uh, the video after reading. And compare your reasoning to the provided explanations, um, at the end of the document. Solo, if you're doing this solo is cool, it, it can do this just as well as the group. Uh, and also reflect. Make sure I let them in. Great. So this is no pressure, uh, there will be a timer. And that my goal is for. It to be about 10 minutes max. Um, if we need 15 minutes, we will have it. But my goal is also make sure that we are, uh, getting through each of these. I'm going to assign, uh, each of you to teams. Uh, it's going to be. Three teams. Um, but before we do that, we're going to do all of this as one large group, just so we can have an understanding of what we're actually doing here today. So we have 23 people. So that's enough people for, uh, for brick our rooms for the, um. B, uh, reading. So if you have already opened up the document, we're going to be doing A together. Um, and I'm going to need some volunteers. So. We're going to do the eight together and then I'm going to, um, and after we do A and we answer the questions, I'm going to break out into the rooms. And each room, you're going to be assigned your letter, which is either B, C, or D. So I'm going to divide, let me see, we have 23 people. I'll make sure to make sure that it's a, it's, it's an even number, but also personalities are. Are good here too. So divided about three, it's going to be about, uh, seven people per. Each one is going to focus on a specific part of logic and reasoning. Um, the first one is going to be more focused on cultural diplomacy and. Security priorities, and that's what we're going to be doing together. Uh, the second one is going to be humanitarian logistics and crisis. And let me see, is there a link to the reading that someone can share? I'd say it should be in the chat. If you came in late, it should still be there, not, uh, if someone can just reshare for me, please. The third, uh, scenario is going to be focused on economic forecasting under uncertainty. Uh, and the fourth is going to be policy communication and public perception. Thank you, Carrie. Or Husham, I'm sorry. All right, great. So for the reading, um. I'm sorry, for the volunteers, uh, this is what or who I will need. Sorry, I'm, I get, I think little things like this are fun. My wife, um, she recently did, um. Jury duty. And she had such a fun time, although it was a very tough. Uh, case that she had to do, she just kept talking about it for weeks. So I, I actually bought her one of those, um, solve this case games that you can get in like Target. And we played it together. We had a great time. It was so fun. And that is was inspiring this tonight. So it's that collaboration. So, uh. For us as a whole, and also for us when we break out into groups, um, regardless, if there's seven people in. We mainly need five people. If you are not one of those five people, you may be recruited by one of the five people for support. So we need a reader, obviously, and for this, uh, first one, I will be the reader. Um, my goal is to sum it up in 60 seconds as well after reading it. Uh, you can also read along. So. You know, that's a, a classic, um, case management practice for your F S O A. Uh, because it will be quiet, but I will read to myself, you read it to yourself, and then I will summarize what, uh, what, what I read. Um, so we're going to need a reader. We're going to need an analyst. And the analyst's job is to break down, and you can read it right, you know, on your, on your document, break down the argument, identify the claims and highlight the evidence. We're going to need a skeptic. We're going to need someone who can challenge the assumptions and identify, um. The logical fallacies. So ma- mainly question everything that's going to be, if you have that personality, that's going to help you there. Um, we're going to describe, you know, someone who's going to record the group's reasoning, the group's thinking and their final answers. And the presenter, which is going to summarize your team's logic in 60 seconds. Um, including your, your answers to, uh, to the questions that are, um, that are attached. So let me see. Can I just, if we can, if I can just get you to raise your hand, uh, I'll get you to be one of those, uh, for other people. Who do we have? Okay. Hesham, we have, um, you will be the. I'll let you pick since you went first. You want to be the analyst and just come up mute and, uh, in, in off camera as well if you want.
Good evening. I appreciate it. Uh. Appreciate y'all for setting this up and for doing this. I'll be the scribe.
You'll be the scribe. Okay, great. Next, we have Nina. Um, I'm going to let you pick as well. Do you want to be the skeptic? Uh, the presenter or the analyst?
I think, uh, analyst is fine.
Okay. Um, we need two more. Okay, we got Matthew. Uh, which one would you like, sir? Would you like to be the? The skeptic, the skeptic. Okay. And lastly. We need a presenter. Worst case scenario, if we don't have someone to volunteer in the next five seconds, I'll do it. Okay, let's get started. And in your group, um. We're definitely looking for engagement here. So, uh, when you break out into your small groups, if, uh, if for some reason the, you know, you can't get enough volunteers, the reader and the, uh, presenter can be one. All right. So in your document. I'm going to read to myself. It's just three paragraphs. Uh, then I'm going to come back and summarize, um, what I read. And then my team here, uh, we're going to come together and answer these questions and break down what actually happened. So, so. We're going to break down what happened and then we're going to answer the questions, just so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. There's only four questions per scenario. So that's the reason why it's only going to be 15 minutes, uh, for the breakout rooms. Once we come back from the breakout rooms, after, you know, we do this group one, then we'll go through each team and that should, um. Have us concluded at the. Uh, end of our time tonight. All right, let's get started. All right. I get a thumbs up if, um. If you're ready. All right, just a few people. Okay, some more people. So we have some more people reading. Um, I see your hand, Nina. Are, are, is it, are you saying that you start reading or, um?
Already, I already heard it. Uh. My part was like to analyze, right?
Yeah. Okay, cool. We got some more fingers here. We got some hands up. Phyllis, did you have a question or you let me know that you're, that you're ready? Okay. Missed it, but not a problem. Okay, so let's get started. Um, I, I read it. And, and, and because I'm probably looking at it as a case, and I'm not looking at the answers better way. I'm, I'm experiencing this real time, uh, just like you. So my summary in thinking is that the embassy is debating. If, uh, this should cut funding for the cultural exchange program, uh, to fund the new cybersecurity training. And the. Security officer basically is saying that. The cultural programs are a luxury is not needed. And while the cultural teams argues, uh, they build trust and reduce, uh, disinformation. So the reports show that cultural engagement improves cooperation, but is, I guess, a little costly. Um, and in the, the critics claim that these programs mainly benefit urban elitists or elites. Um, I guess despite the criticism, surveys show the positive public opinion in regions with added programs, the ambassador. Um, must decide whether to defend this program. Um, through cultural diplomacy or shift the funds to cybersecurity. So it's, it's a classic. Um, battle of, hey, you know, we need this, we need this money. I'm, I'm, in fact, I'm pretty sure they're having this conversation right now. Uh, with the government shutdown, hey, we need this money. Uh, we're going to just, you know, shut things down until we can get some funds moved around. So. All right, my, my analysts, um. Help us out. So. Break down the, the logic based on what you read. Um, what claims do you see and, and what supporting evidence do you, you know, can you get or deduct from it?
So the first question that asked. Um, the most weakened of the super security officer argument. He does, he misunderstand the, the, um. The highest culture engagement that, that had demonstrated stronger cooperation on regional security initiative that. Um, the security doesn't, security officer doesn't not overlook, um, the, the. The strong cooperation through, uh, the culture engagement. So that's, um, ignoring. The indirect long-term benefits of culture engagement. That's one. One flaw of the secure officer. And one evidence that demonstrate this is on the second paragraph that. Says that, um. That the highest school current engagement had also the most stronger cooperation on regional security initiative.
Okay. So the main claim is. Is coming from the security officer, would you say?
Hmm, I'm not like, is the main claim, uh, but there are two arguments that say the one says that. One that, um, doesn't take in account the culture exchange. And the other one, the culture affair says that actually that the culture exchange should be taken in account. I don't, I don't know if you. Um, understand what I mean.
I think so. I believe so. Now let's, let's get a, another perspective. Um. My skeptic. So. What do you, what, what do you want to challenge here? If, if, if anything, and what logic do you want to, to test? With that?
Well, I wish they had told us what, what the evidence that the cultural affairs team presents. Is because that would make answering the questions maybe more straightforward. Uh. Because, uh, if you are skeptical, it's possible, I guess, to be skeptical without being cynical, but you could say, of course, the cultural affairs team is going to argue that cultural affairs and cultural programs are important. Uh, so I guess it boils down to how, how good do we think their? Evidence is.
Yeah.
Resisted anti-American disinformation campaigns. Um, but I, I know that in this kind of exercise, you're never going to get as much information as you want, but we'll all have to get used to that, I guess. They could have told us, for example, a timeline, like, you know, over what. Timeline are you measuring, um? The effectiveness of these exchange programs, et cetera. Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, it would have been nice, but that's kind of, like you said, that's kind of the point is to not have all the, all the evidence. Um, in, in, probably in the jury duty says, session, there would be some evidence there, but it's more so just taking from. The deductive, um, reasoning of, well, what is said and. And, and maybe we're taking our perspective from the people who have read the evidence. We don't have it. But we know that the security officer has an argument, which is the, uh, the first question here. Uh, let's see here. So. Let's see my analyst, my skeptic. Okay, so my scribe, um. And this may be, you know, easy because we were all presenting, uh, we're technically, you know, presenting this live now, but, um. Let's, but let's see if we can jump into the first. Question here. I do not have the answers in front of me. I do have access to them. Um, which flaw most weakens the security officer's argument? Is it A, assuming one's category of investment directly causes improved safety? Is it B, ignoring indirect long-term benefits of cultural engagement? Is it C? Um, misstating the percentage of funds spent on exchanges? Or is it D, uh, over? Over emphasizing public opinion metrics? The flaw of most. The flaw that most weakens the security guards' argument. So the argument is. That it's a luxury. When our data infrastructure is at risk. We know cybersecurity is a, is a serious. Um. Threat today. I mean, this is, you know, we're in 2025. And people abroad. Have, like during the pandemic, they controlled our gas pumps. Um, they, they shut those down. Um, we've had. The. Different parts of the government, um, targeted in here in the last 24 months as well as 12 months. So. Thank you, um, Bill. I appreciate you, but this will be recorded. So if you want to participate, let you can. Uh, so I, I mean, I know I understand the, like, some importance of cybersecurity, but I also get the importance of having the cultural exchange. I've. Known a few, uh, students, as I shared with, um. Event. That. You know, we had, uh, people from DR in our schools and. They took from us and we, we gained from them. We learned, you know, and, and I think it was a nice exchange. It was just nice to meet somebody who. Didn't naturally have the same upbringing as you and, and had a different perspective of not only your government, your school lunches. Um, the education system and, and different, there's different things. It was just really nice to hear. So. Me personally, I do think that. This cyber security program can stand some funds, but you know, I also question and argue myself. Why do we need to take it away from the, uh, foreign exchange program or, you know, the, the cultural exchange program? Can it be, I mean, and, and it is somewhat of a luxury, but. That's the whole argument of, um. Diversity and inclusion or D E I is someone who does not have your background can bring a perspective to the table. Uh, when it comes to decision-making or creating a solution to whatever said problem is and. Given this program, it gives people that opportunity to, um, share their unique. Perspective or even take on a learn a unique perspective. So. Which flaw most weakens the security officer's argument? What do you, what do y'all think? And, and, um, and I'm recruiting. Every, uh, all of you that are in the chat, um. To answer. You've, you've heard, um, my thought, you've heard the skeptics thought, you're the analyst. Uh, what is your thought? And you also have read the, uh. The readings here. Let's drop that in the chat. We have A. B, A, a little unsure, but we'll say B, B. Let me go get the answer so I can make sure because I'm. I don't get a chance to actually always participate, which you got, so. That's curious. B, B, okay. And. Um, where is it? Okay, there it is. Answer is B. The answer is B. Okay. Um, I'm gonna run. It's curious. So it's saying, uh, ignoring indirect long-term benefits. Yeah. And this is what I'm saying. I mean, so it's kind of, it's kind of right there alongside of that. Okay, number two. What new evidence would best strengthen the cultural team's position? Uh, is it A? Alumina, uh, corporation data. Uh, showing reduced disinformation incidents, B, increased security incidents in regions with fewer programs. C, cyber attacks, cyber attack report from previous fiscal year, or D, a regional treaty. Uh, linking cultural and security policy. So in, in this case, just to. Add some thoughts to what new evidence. Really for us, what evidence, but we're, we're just trusting our leaders here based on their thoughts. Um, what evidence was strengthening the, the cultural teams positioning? In the chat, we have. A, 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 B, B, we have some Bs, we have some As. Um, eleven nine corporation data showing reduced disinformation incidents, um, increased. So, and, and for me, they did that reasoning is what evidence would actually help the exchange program and. Based on that, uh, increased security incidents, I don't think that would help them, but that's, anyway, let's just see. The answer is A. Let's, let's see. It says, uh, alumni corp, uh, cooperation data. Cooperation data, uh, showing reduced disinformation. Incidents. All right, uh, number three, the officer's reasoning reflects which fallacy? Is it A, uh, false dilemma? Which, you know, we see that sometimes, just sometimes creating a problem, um, to support your argument is, or is it B, post? Um, hawk fallacy. Appeal to authority. It's, and it's C, or is it D, hasty generalization? Go ahead, get the answer. Says which, let me see, so I say which officer, um. That's a good question. I mean, I only saw the security. Officer in this one. Let me see, is there another officer? One more stuff, I focused on the security officer. Yeah, I just see the, the only people I really see this in the conversation right now is the security officer, the deputy chief of mission. So the, the D C M. On the change, the D C M warned, so it, it spoke about visible attainable results. I must be prioritized, uh, for the upcoming physical review. It's cool, we, uh, review, it matters. Yeah, I don't see, uh, any, anyone else actually speaking or operating. I do see that the ambassador must make a decision. Uh, but the two people who I'm seeing in this conversation are the deputy chief of mission and the, um. Security. Senior security officer. Uh, in the chat, we have. A, D, D, A, A, D, uh, any of the officer at the beginning. Did I miss? I don't see that person. The officer in the beginning, no, he isn't.
She just explained, she means a security officer.
Okay, cool. All right, same page. All right, and the answer is is it our name? Okay, um, for number three, it is A. All right, final question before we, um, go into the breakout rooms. The ambassador's final decision, uh, depends most on which assumption? Is it going to be A, cybersecurity outcomes are more visible than diplomatic influence? B, cultural diplomacy yields quantifiable long-term security benefits? These are some good, you know, uh, C, security and cultural, um, some sort of security and culture compete for the same staff resources? Or is it going to be D, uh, public diplomacy must justify its spending through metrics? We have a mixed bag here. And the answer is B. The answer is B. Um, cultural diplomacy yields quantifiable long terms, yeah. Cultural diplomacy yields quantifiable long-term security benefits. And, and, and I guess that's taking a position to say that we want to support the, um, the cultural exchange program. So, okay, so we have a taste of what it's like. Um, and, and obviously, you know, we see there's a, you know, mixed answers, you know, all around, so there's going to be some conversation you're going to have. Um, we'll give you the full fifteen minutes. Uh, we'll come back and we will hear from your presenters that you will choose, um, as a team. So, uh, let's get our groups prepared. Let's see, set up the they're going to be three rows. Perfect, they did it for us. And I'm gonna put, um, your letter in the room title, so you should be able to see what it's called here. Uh, B. And paste. Should have said A, B, and C, just to make, make it simple, but I love these, I love things like this. And the last one, copy and paste. All right, um, I may pop into your rooms, just to hang out with you, uh, a little bit, but we'll see you soon. The rooms are open. Oh, this is a room too. I wanted to do a fourth one, but it's okay. It's all right. We'll be one. Um. Is this a room B, C, and D? Oh, no, it, it should be three rooms for everyone. Set that timer in breakout rooms after fifteen minutes. Lei, are you, um, you going to your room? So Lei, Daniel, Jessica?
I'm here.
Um, which, it, so i- is the, is the chat giving you, uh, a room?
Um, no, but I'm definitely just listening, follow. I'm kind of new to all this. I'm scheduled to take the test on like the twentieth. But I'm definitely listening and I'm taking in everything that you're saying. So.
For sure. So, are, are, but you, you do have a room assigned to you, though? Is that what I'm asking?
I don't see it. Where would it be?
Uh. Interesting. You don't see it. It looks like your room is B. Okay, Lei, Sali, Daniel, uh, your rooms, Sali, uh, your room is C. Daniel, your room is A, or technically B. Sali, your room is C.
How much time we have? I don't see the timer. Oh, it was right there. Three minutes. Welcome back. Welcome back. Okay, okay. See, people are coming back in. Amazing. I had a chance to pop into your room and and hear some of the workshopping happening. So I love that. I immediately noticed that some some of the groups you did not read out loud. And then some of the groups did. So I'm curious, you know, after this is done, which one worked better? Like which one felt better? You know, to to read it out loud or or not? Very curious about that. Okay. Lamont, I see you have your hand up. Then we'll we'll jump into the the groups here and your responses. I can't hear you. You're muted. While while you're getting that, I'm gonna call on Bridget, sorry, Burget next.
Yeah, it's pronounced Birgit.
Birgit, thank you.
Um, I I to your question about whether it's better to read it out loud or to yourself. I was just thinking like during the test, we have to read it to ourselves. So that I read it to myself in our group. And so the rest of us did too. So I wonder if it would be like not practicing the right way if we read it out loud.
For sure. Yeah, I I love that thought because Kadeen, which she's with us tonight. But that was her thoughts as well with her with her program. So it's the first time around out loud and silence. Yeah, okay, I see you on Reed's. Okay, great. In the chat, if that raise your hand if you are the presenter of your group. We're gonna start from B team, Reading B, humanitarian logistics and crisis. A beer, you are up next. I want to hear what you guys came up with.
Oh, sorry. I thought you just meant raising your hand overall. I'm in group D, so.
Okay, okay. You keep it up though. Keep it up. So I know, you know, when we get there. Who is the presenter for for the B team? You are up next.
We didn't. We didn't end up picking one, or did we? Okay. Or the D team? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said B.
Yeah, I am asking about the B team because that's who's next right now. Uh, y'all didn't pick one? Okay, well, any volunteers? May- maybe the analysts or the skeptic can can share. Or the note taker, since you have the answers.
I can share my experience. It's team D experience.
Are you team B? Is it Bravo?
No, team D.
Okay, we're looking for B because they're up next.
Okay, I'll step back then.
Okay, humanitarian logistics and crisis. Where are you, team B?
Okay, I'll speak for my team.
Okay.
So the whole thing was essentially comparing two like two teams, two humanitarian teams between like how effective they were. Or and then it was posing the question how their effectiveness was affected by like the environmental and infrastructural damage that was done in one area or because of like the effectiveness and in skill training. So that's how I was able like, that's what the team decided. We didn't get through all of the questions, but the first two we got. We got, well, I completely forgot. Hold up. Oh, A and then B. I can go ahead and answer the other three without consulting the team, but I don't know if we're all in congruent with what my answers would be.
Well, let's see what we have. So for the first one, you are correct. A ignores confounding variables affecting outcomes. So the context is the committee assumes volunteer effectiveness costs poor outcomes. I'm sorry. I'm yeah, yeah, this is B. Let's make sure I was looking at the right one. Poor outcomes without accounting for other factors like infrastructure damage, infrastructure damage and flooding. The correlation is not the causation, right? So always control the confounding variables. So the the skill is you want to ask what else could explain this or help explain this? So definitely go over that. Now, B or number two, the answer is A. And you said B. So the volunteer. So volunteer training quality and deployment timing data. The context is to prove causation. We need, we need to know where the skill and timing impacted the outcome. And precision, precision in data makes reasoning stronger. And I think the takeaway there is look for evidence that isolates the actual mechanism of cause and effect. For the third one. You say you sure as be with for the third one. The answer is A. Outcome variables were influenced by geography, not effort. The counterargument highlights unequal conditions between alpha and beta in validating the committee's simplistic comparison. So the teaching point here is strong reasoning depends on comparison, comparing like with like. So just making sure that they are comparable. The the skill here is identify false equivalence and comparative arguments. And number four. The answer was A. Inductive reasoning from incomplete data. So the context, the committee generalizes from two regions without enough data to prove a universal rule. So what we want to take away is induction needs adequate examples to justify generalization. And of course, recognize when evidence is too limited to support a broad claim. The answers are on the form that I that you guys have right now. It's at the very bottom. It'll open up a second link, but no opening yet. So so we can, you know, continue to make this fun. All right. Team C, Team Charlie, where are you at? Looking looking for your your speaker, Vicinius.
Yeah, that'll be me, Venice.
Venice, thank you so much. So what's your guys come up with?
Um, yeah, so we had the reading on economic forecasting under uncertainty. It's about an embassy economic section predicting that inflation will drop 2% next year. The text cites short term factors that justify like the the drop in inflation, like stable fuel prices and foreign reserves. The political officer in the embassy, he doubts that inflation will drop 2%. He cites political factors like elections and trade volatility. And then the ambassador is expecting them to to provide a sing, one page explaining how they came up with this forecast. But they have a lot of this contradictory data which they can't, which it's hard for them to like. It appears that it's hard to decide what would cause the stability in prices. Okay, like the central bank economist, another regional trade bloc. They might all affect how prices change next year. And yeah, and I guess their dilemma is should they keep things simple and confident or should they reveal like all the contradictions that could could come up?
That is a dilemma.
Yeah.
For this scenario, it feels a little too real. So what were your your group's answers?
Yeah, so we answered A for the first one. Yeah, like 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 we said that the forecast was mainly about short term trends. For number two, we said A, like I guess a five year historical correlation would make would make the forecast kind of stronger. It'd be less short term. For question three, we also chose A. Yeah, ma- it's mainly the fuel stability that was influencing like our analysis and inflation control. Four was the hardest one. We were between A and B. Yeah.
So okay, if you had to land on one, which one?
Let's see, our group, I think more of us said said it would be B, like this would be the more, I think so. Now it was not B?
No, it it wasn't. So it was A. It was A. So to to recap, yes, number number one was A. Over reliance on short term trends to predict long term outcomes. The forecast, as you said, I use two months of data to predict a year's inflation, a logical foundation. The point is beware of temporal fallacies. Short term evidence can't just for long term, can't just for long term conclusions. Distinguish between trend, stability and temporary coincidence. Number two was a five year historical correlation between fuel and inflation. The context is long, longer term data would reveal if the relationship is consistent, not coincidental. Coincidental. The point here is logical reasoning favors pattern validity over anecdotal evidence, strengthening arguments by testing consistency over time. C was A. Fuel stability is the dominant factor in inflation control. The forecast depends on this hidden assumption is if false, the entire argument collapses. Every argument stands on at least one assumption, identify it. Practice assumption hunting to test argument stability. And four was A. Regression allows testing multiple causes, fuel, policy tariffs simultaneously revealing real influence strength. So our takeaway there is logical reasoning favors controlled comparative test, testing of variables. Recognize when evidence must expand beyond a single variable. Good job, though. Good job.
Thank you. Yeah, these questions are hard.
And that's the point, you know, after after Matthew's session yesterday, I didn't want to show up short. So I I wanted to make sure that I brought some heat today. For for those that have not had a chance to to watch Matthew's replay, I highly recommend it. I can't wait till he finishes because it's gonna be a, I've been learning a lot. I need to get with you offline so I can tell you the things I've learned to. It's actually been really good to learn the things that I got wrong initially through through the studies, but appreciate you, you know, doing that. But yeah, tonight's session is really great. Let's go with team D, team Delta. Let's let's bring it in. Who is your presenter?
That will be me.
All right.
Okay, so just to kind of go over the question, um, do you want me to like read it over? Do you want me to just kind of get into it?
Yeah. So first on here, you know, what did you guys come up with? You know, what, where did you land with the the thinking of the context? And then we'll go over the answers.
Okay, so basically, we established like the argument and like the different parts of the reading to be able to kind of establish what our answers were. With one of the main arguments being that because trade with country D has expanded, our environmental cooperation is clearly succeeding. So we kind of decided that that was going to be our argument. And then kind of going off of that as well. There were kind of things that contradicted it because it did end up becoming an issue within the press and in the public. And they needed to convene a meeting that would kind of fix like the hiccup with the statement that they had put out. And so starting with our first one, I think we all were kind of able to agree that this one was the one that we were all able to be pretty sure on, and that was A, and that was false cause.
True, is is correct.
Okay. Um, we said that was because like it increased like trade and it proves that environmental cooperation was a success within that. And so like I said, that did end up becoming false due to them having to retract that statement. Okay, and so with the question two, what evidence most undermines the the embassy's claim? And we went with A as well. Just because like if trade growth did come from tariff changes, non environmental cooperation. The argument for the embassy, the two arguments that are there would essentially fall apart.
Y'all are y'all were a small but mighty team. You didn't have a lot of people in there. But you guys really came together. And just to add a little texture to the first one. The embassy claims environmental cooperation caused trade, trade growth, ignoring the tariff change may be the true reason. So cause claims, casuals are casual claims require proof that one event directly produced the other. So exactly what you did, challenge correlation based on correlation based arguments. And with number two, the evidence disproves the casual link. Cause rules are, I feel like I'm saying incorrectly. Casual link showing a more plausible alternative explanation. So in reasoning, a better explanation beats a louder, a louder one. Use counter evidence to test causal causality. Number three, what did you get?
We got A as well.
Okay, and why?
Um, it was because like the flaw was missing like the casual connection. So that was the one that we essentially kind of went with with the cooperation of the trade growth. So like providing like environmental cooperation directly caused trade growth would kind of fix like the logic problem within the argument.
And that's right in line. The embassy could correct its argument by proving a genuine cause and effect connection. So logical repair means adding missing links between claim and evidence, strengthen flawed logic by filling evidence gaps. So very good. All right, last one. What'd you have?
So the last one for me personally, I was kind of stuck in between A and C. And then Young did a really good job of kind of explaining as to why the answer is A. And basically, like I guess in like short term, she said that retracting kind of preserves like credibility and trustworthiness like within the public, which is definitely vital. Vital for, you know, whatever countries that you're working in and diplomacy and public communication. And so it's better to just kind of have like the misleading message and, you know, kind of run with that just for that to get proven wrong. And you know, it can cause kind of like a snowball effect. So we won't say.
I think here it's proven that you can have five bright minds and 20 bright minds. As long as you can work together, you can get to the the end of the issue. Great job to each of you. So A was correct. Retracting the false statement aligns with logical unethical consistency. So logic and credibility go hand in hand. Accurate reasoning builds long term trust. Prioritize truth over persuasion. Amazing job, everyone. I'm very excited that because again, I've jumped into your your rooms. It sounds like you were, you know, excited about this just as much as I was. If you would be interested, would you guys like to do this again? It's been a year since we did this last time. Should we do this again next week? Or maybe even tomorrow? I do see some thumbs up. Okay, I see some absoluties. Abraham said it was fun. I saw your messenger. I appreciate that. Brendan has his hand raised. No, okay, cool, cool, cool. Tomorrow and next week. No problem. I love some more FS away adjacent and and that's and that's the point. I wanted this to be in line with FS away as well. And that's what we did last year. People talked about that for another eight months. So I think we should definitely keep doing that. Because with the case management side of the FS away is, I mean, it's very similar to this. You're given your packet of information. It's quiet. You're reading it to yourself and then you come together. Each person has an assigned duty. And you work together to to find that answer. So I love that. Jasmine, I see that you have your hands up.
Yes, I want to share what I, how I process my thoughts that come to that conclusion on these choices. So it's very useful toward. I want to share to everybody that I work in a legal field for six year. What it does is you look at the word and use some, there's some particular work jumping out, not environmental progress and certain work jumping out. So you catch the idea what the key words want to telling you what's going on in there. And the second is the pattern is you identify the issue, then the next thing is correction. Action, what action to it needs to be take to correct that? So that's how that legal processing thinking. So that will help like when you look at these audit documents, bunch of works, but you're gonna find the keyword, what's the issue is? Then you tackle on how to resolve it. The next thing is, so you're gonna see the answers jumping out loud. Like you want to ask why, why you say that? And what's the reason that support that like Travis say the evidence? So they're helpful.
That's right. The evidence. Each of your backgrounds, no matter if you come from law, human resources, technology of some sort, no matter what it is, accounting. One thing I love about the State Department is that your skill is useful, your skill is needed. So definitely stay encouraged, stay motivated. Let's continue to get mission ready together. I can't wait to be all become coworkers together when we pass this F site. And I'm gonna say, hey, I remember when, you know, we were out here grinding together, making this, making this thing, you know, come together. So very grateful that everyone showed up tonight. We're gonna do this again. Today is Tuesday, same time tomorrow, seven thirty Eastern Standard Time. We're gonna have new scenarios. Do you do you all want to continue with logic and reasoning with the with FS away twist? Okay, I see some head nods. I see. Okay. Great. I said so wanted to do the clock that thing. I don't know what it means yet. I'm getting there. Perfect. We're gonna, we're gonna clock it. Everyone have a great night and we will see you tomorrow. I'm gonna share the the private link in the chat and also the email. But tomorrow I will just, well, tonight I was to show the the chat. I'll just put it in chat. If you are not in the WhatsApp group, stay on. But other than that, because I do want to make sure that everyone does have access to what we're doing tonight, including the links. But other than that, everyone have a great night and we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Great job, everybody. Okay, let me get that WhatsApp chat link right now. Curious. So I know Akasi, you you have it because you're you're in the chat. So if you have any questions, I mean, I'm here as well, but a beer. Am I saying your name correctly? So if you're not in the chat, how did you hear about us?
Um, I watched your YouTube videos.
What? Okay.
Yeah, I like, so I've been studying for this exam for a little bit. I was supposed to take it back in February.